Seeing is 5:30, I will call to order the December 16, 2015, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Bay County Library. We can all stand and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Eileen, if you would take the role, please.
Don Carline.
Here.
Sue Blodden.
Here.
Ann Harris here.
Franklin.
Here.
And Robert Shaw.
Here.
Chairperson's report. Tonight is my honor to welcome Sally Hirschman, who is the head of the acquisitions department of Bay County Library System. And Sally, if you would go up to the podium and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about who you are and how you got interested in libraries and what you do and your job.
All right.
Thank you.
As you heard, my name is Sally Hirschman. I am the department head of the acquisitions department. In 1975, I was getting ready to graduate from Central High School, and the dean of students knew I was looking for a full-time job. And so she told me about the Bay County Library System, which was only about a year old at the time, was looking for a library assistant in the technical services department. I interviewed with Linda Heemstra and Marina Cruz, who was the assistant director at the time. They offered me the job. I accepted, and I've been here ever since. The technical services department where I started was basically like the acquisitions department is now. We order, we receive, we invoice, we catalog, we assign call numbers to all the different library materials that are kept in the libraries. And there have been a few changes over the years. You know, we used to type out the card catalogs, or the card, yeah, the card catalog, for the card catalog, I'm sorry, on a typewriter. Now we export the bibliographic record from OCLC into our database and at our holdings. We used to order record albums, cassettes, eight-track tapes. Those are all things of the past. We now order CDs and DVDs and book on CDs. Just a lot of changes over the years. It's... I lost my train of thought. I'm not used to speaking. The goal for the acquisitions department that we've always had is to catalog and process the library materials and give them out to the libraries and so that the patrons can find them easily. And that will always continue to be our goal. And like I said, I could stand up here and talk for hours about all the changes in the four years, but I won't. I'll stop. Certainly try to answer any questions you may have. So thank you for inviting me here tonight.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
What is the most difficult part of acquisitions that you've found over your experience on the job in terms of ordering a book? Or how do you decide what books to order to actually getting it in and distributing it?
Well, we have selectors who actually choose the titles to order. What we do in acquisitions is find the best place to place the order. We have certain vendors that we deal with the most, so we go that route. So I don't have to choose the titles. That's done for me, thank goodness. The most difficult, I think, is finding the bibliographic record. The cataloging rules, we used to go by AAC. There are two rules. That has now changed in the last couple of years. So we now use RDA. And it's a whole new set of rules and different way to do things. But we've learned it, and that's what we're using now. So that's the, you know, difficult aspect. Other than that, it's real great.
Well, I imagine over the years, you've probably have seen the use of computers and what you do with your job and others, and the Internet, and how much more you rely on that than probably what you did when you started.
Oh, definitely. Yes. You know, when to find the bib information, when I first started, I used to look in catalogs. And I would write them out on paper, you know, all the, who the publisher was, the copyright date, and all that. We would find the title, we'd go to the catalog, write it out. And then we would type it on all this template-like, and run the card stock off in this copy machine that used to catch on fire because it would be so overheated from running the card stock. And so, like I said, now we do it all on computer. We go to OCLC, the online computer library, and find our bib record and export it in. So it works out real well.
Well, on behalf of the board and the administration and everybody, thank you for coming. Oh, we have another question.
This might have an answer from your response to Bob, but does acquisitions have any connection with Overdrive about eBooks and such?
We place the order. So every other Monday, but again, we have selectors who choose the title. I actually place the order with Overdrive, and then we receive the invoice and pay the invoice. But that's as far as acquisitions is involved with that.
When that old machine used to catch on fire?
Yeah, the copy machine.
Was that when you were putting in stuff like Tropic Cancer and Lady Chatterley's Lover? Not so.
Yeah. I don't even know what titles made it do that. And this was over when the Indian Street of Office used to be on Johnson Street. That was a long time ago. And then we moved to somewhere on Fifth Street. That building's not even there anymore. We're there temporarily. Then we went over on Lockyette, and now we're here. So I moved right along with everybody.
Well, you know, I know how tedious and detailed her job is. So could you just give them a snippet, when you talk about the rules, could you give them an example of something you have to type in for one book in order for it to go to the OCLC?
Wow. Okay. You need an ISBN number, all right? That's one of the major things. Well, number one, there's what we call an 008 line, that are all these codes that, like if a book is large print, you need to have a D there so that it gets filed in computer land as large print. So you fill out all those codes first. And then you have your ISBN, and then you have your 100 line, which is the author, and you have your title, and you need your publisher, copyright date, paging, you know, if it's illustrated, and of course to come up with your subject headings. In OCLC, over the years, there's many people who catalog in OCLC. And there could be 10 different bibs for the same book. And so you have to look and find the best bib. And then if that best bib doesn't meet the RDA rules, you have to tweak it and fix it. Like, we used to just have 300 P period, that's just for pages. Well, now we have to spell pages out. Volume has to be spelled out. Illustrations have to be spelled out. And this is the library rules all over. So it has added a little bit more work to us. But it's easy for the public. I mean, when they look on a catalog, they see 300 pages. They don't see the 300 P period.
I probably should know this, but OCLC, what is that?
Online Computer Library Catalog.
Okay.
Yes. And there's millions of records on there. They also have Overdrive, so you also need the bibs for the Overdrive on there.
Sally, thank you for coming tonight. More importantly, thank you for four years of dedicated service to the library system. Thank you.
Time would bypass, I tell you.
Always does.
But acquisitions is a wonderful task.
Great.
And everyone works in their love. So.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work, but it's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Bye.
A bit of housecleaning before we move on. Under unfinished business, if you could add the item MOU, which is the Memorandum of Understanding, we'll be discussing and voting on tonight. That is with the union agreements, except for contracts.
Yes, you're welcome.
Let's get back to my report. This has been, this will be my 24th and last meeting as chairman of the library board, at least for now. And it has been a lot of fun. It's been a lot of learning, and I've enjoyed it all. And I wish to extend a deep thanks to all the library board members who have helped me and listen to my, and give me feedback and opinions, and I appreciate that. And even Kristen Rivin, who is not here, who was here for 18 months, and did the same thing, and I really do appreciate that. Also, the administration, who has always been accessible, always been available, always has answered questions, and I think that's true with all of us, and always has got us information we have requested. And for that, I am deeply indebted, and I thank all of you for that. And I certainly thank the staff, who continues to do a remarkable job under circumstances with the income structure of the library system. It has been a tax base. It has continued to do an outstanding job. Year after year, we thank you, and I thank you. And so, on behalf of that, I walk around, and I want to shake everybody's hand. Up and down, because it's been a, it's been a great ride.
At the end of the annual meeting.
Don, thank you.
If we didn't give you a hard time, we're not doing our job.
That's right. Appreciate it. Mac?
Yes, sir.
Trish? Kevin? And I leave again. Thank you. And on that note, I did have another question, but I'll wait. A couple meetings ago, I think one of us asked the question, how many volumes or items do we have in our library system? And Trish sent that out to all of us. I think it came out to somewhere around 350,000 items, give or take a little. And I said, well, gee, that's a lot of, that's a lot of volume. How does that compare to libraries in the world? Because we are one library among many in the world. So I'm going to show you a short, four-minute video that will show us the 10 largest libraries in the world. And I suspect most of you have heard of, at least some of them, some maybe you have not. And anybody care to guess the largest before we show this?
Beijing.
Excellent guess. Wrong, but good guess.
England?
No?
Library Congress?
Good guess.
Michigan's close.
All right. We'll show the video, and then you'll have your answers.
So we have a hard drive that backs up to the net's back up to something else. Okay. Too bad they lost it. Oh, thank you. All right. Minutes, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November board meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Bill's payable. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Ann, wanna walk us through or tell us what you?
Hi. Everything was in excellent order.
I'm waiting for you to say, "You know, I found a glitch here."
I'm waiting for students.
All right. There won't be any. All right. Is there any questions they have of Kevin about the bills or Ann or anybody? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the bill's payable signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The financial report and the penal fine we will take together. Is there a motion to receive?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Kevin, you wanna take us through the financials, pages 12 to 15.
Okay. Page 12 is our balance sheet. So we'll go to page 13 is our revenue. Again, as we're heading into the end of the year, we're just getting trickles in of revenue. What we'll see in the month of November, December is going to do a little service fund money coming in. That's a program we participate in through the federal government that reimburses us for phone service and internet services. So that'll be coming in. Just found out that we will be receiving about $9,000 in our BCA foundation line item. So we'll be getting that here shortly. And penal fines, as we handed over at the meeting, penal fines for the month of November came in at $33,344.87, which brings us close to the $400,000 mark for 11 months. And so we have one more month to go. And if it comes in at a, you know, a decent number, an average number, we should be right around 400 and say 30,000 for the year, which is almost in line with what we had last year. So hopefully we can continue to see that number stay above 400,000 as we continue into the future years here. So that is present. And again, the bulk of our revenue is in, so now we're just getting the little trickles in. And we'll have one more penal fine coming in. On the expense side, on page 14, we have, this is through November, so we'll have three payrolls in December still to hit, but as far as any areas of concern, there are none. We are pretty much done paying our health insurance invoices, so the bulk of our health insurance expenses aren't in. And we did get a, well, we'll go over that, the, on the budget stuff. Let's see. That's basically, there's really no areas of concern on the expense side. We are just making sure that everyone has items they need to get through the rest of the year, finish the year up. And that is basically it. I can answer any questions if anyone has any.
Are there any questions from board members of Kevin or Trish? Looks excellent, Kevin. Good job. Seeing none, all those in favor of receiving both the financial report and the penal fines, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Administration report, page 16 of your packet. Trish?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Wanted to mention a couple of things that happened in December. We received some monies through MMLC a couple of months ago and used that to update our laptop traveling lab, basically. It's six laptops that we use for educating the public at the rest of the branches and also sometimes here as well. So it's a nice thing to be able to travel with and that's updated now. We're also starting to update staff computers with Microsoft 2016. And once the staff computers get upgraded and the staff learns how to do it, then we'll start updating the public computers as well. So we'll be pretty up to date on all of that. We had a nice visit from Carolyn Weirda from the STEM group from Saginaw Valley State University. There are STEM acts going on all over the region and we wanted to have an opportunity to have the administration and the managing librarians and department heads listen to kind of a higher level look of what's going on in the area and have an idea of how we can align what we do with what's going on with the schools as well to make the best use of all of our time and dollars. There will be a meeting in January to talk about what libraries and other out-of-school places can do, and we are going to be at the table at that meeting, so we're very pleased to be invited to that. Our gift of reading officially ended Saturday, December 5th, but book and monetary donations are continuing to come in. Eileen updated me one last time before the meeting and we have now collected $3,345, which is about $100, $150 more than last year, and 338 titles, which is, I want to say, close to 150 books more than last year as well. So we're up in both money and donations and those have all gone out to area organizations. They go out to organizations such as the Salvation Army and Good Samaritan and also the Literacy Council. We had, I just wanted to mention this because this was so much fun. We had the reindeer at the library again in December and it's one of the most popular programs that we have. We have thousands of children and parents that attend this. And the kids are just amazed at the reindeer because many of them have never seen a live reindeer before and the reindeer that we have are very friendly and they come up and they want their noses petted. And the conversations that the kids have with the reindeer are just hysterical. So it's just a really nice feel-good program and a wonderful holiday tradition. And it's not in here, but I did want to mention our winter read program begins January 4th through February 27th, and that's for both children and adults. And the theme this year is Drift Away With A Good Book. So any questions on anything in my report? Yes?
I just wanted to mention that the first year we had the reindeer, we had the two prettiest little girls that ever visited that who ended up getting their pictures in the paper over, which were my two granddads.
Oh.
Who are now 12 and 10, so that was a while ago.
But they enjoyed it.
They did.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
All those in favor of receiving administration reports signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Open to the public, seeing none, we'll do the correspondence. Having none, we move along to committee reports. The finance committee is met, I know, and is there, let's first of all get a motion to receive the budget.
I move we receive the proposed budget, which is pages 17 through 20 of your packet.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A motion second, okay. And Mac and Kevin, let's have you take us through this.
Ann Harris and I met with Trish Burns and Kevin Aiella and have come up with this proposed 2016 budget. I'm gonna turn it over to Kevin and Trish primarily to explain it, but I want to point out a couple of things that are interesting. First is if you look at the total revenues and total expenses, you'll see that we had good experience both ways with relation to the budget, which is always a good thing. And the second is that on page 17, you will see a new item under uses of fund balance, which is called digitization project. And Trish will give you more on this, but this is something new in connection with monies that we will, we hope to budget for things like hardware, software, consultants. And I think one of the things Trish mentioned was putting all our city directories in digital form because we get a lot of requests for those and people would much prefer that than having to come down here and run copies and such. But I am going to come up proposing other use of some of the budget surplus that we had for 2015. I don't know whether this is the time to do it. I might do that under new business or at the end of what Kevin and Trish have to say. Answer your questions.
Kevin, you wanna walk us through the budget or Trish?
Sure. I'll just mention a couple of things and then if I don't go over everything, Kevin can jump in as well. Mac is correct, we are having a very good 2015. We expected that we would be using some fund balance and instead of that, we will be putting money back into the funds. We're looking at restricting approximately $50,000 of that for a digitization project over the next year. And we're looking at, as Mac had mentioned, digitizing city directories, probably some old photographs, a variety of materials that we have in our local history and genealogy department. And we would make those available on the web so it allows that collection to be shown and used, you know, worldwide. We have many unique items in this building. And while it's wonderful to have them in this building, unless they're able to be found, they're not as useful. So we're going to try and have them found by as many people as possible. The next page, page 18, a couple of items I wanted to take a look at. We do have an increase in our 705.03 line item for pages. That's due to the minimum wage increasing, so we're noting that. In our health lines, 716 and 716.08, we're looking at a 5% aggregate rate and a 10% aggregate increase. So we're very pleased with those numbers. Our pension is looking very good, as is the VIBA. We discussed that at length at the final minutes meeting. And we wanted to let the library board know that we are in very good shape with both of those. Many, many other organizations and agencies are not fully funded for those sorts of things and we are, so we're very pleased to announce that. Page 19, I also wanted to note in 967.41 computer hardware expense, we noted the digitization number in the revenue line item, and this is the pass-through for the expense line item, so you'll note that it's in there as well. Those are the main changes in the line items for the next year. One more, we did increase staff training as well, and that is to offer a staff day. We've not done that for, I believe, five or six years. And then to also offer some training for staff system-wide, both either bringing speakers in or webinars or allowing staff to go out and get training as well. So that's, that's really the only other line item that is of any major increase or decrease. So I think we've hit the major. Kevin, was there anything else that you wanted to add?
I'll just highlight real quickly the pension funding level. As of the end of 2014, we are at 106% funding level. So we are, we went from 98% funding level as of the end of 2013. Now we're at 106% and that number does fluctuate every year based on market and other variables. But again, we are in really good shape when it comes to the pension. On the VIBA, which is the voluntary employee benefit association that we put money aside for future retiree healthcare premiums. This fund just started about 2002, 2003 with all the county departments and units. As of the end of 2013, we have a asset value that we've built up of $1.47 million. So we are actually in good shape because right now we are projecting in 2016 that we will be right around $88,000 as a yearly expense. So having close to 1.5 million as an asset pool of money, we are definitely in good shape to have that for future years when we need to. And we continue to put money in the VIBA for next year too. So we're continuing to build that pot up and maybe five to 10 years, we will be able to start drawing money out of that pool of money and those help with our operating budget from that standpoint. So just wanted to highlight those two.
What's the total number of retirees we currently have that get healthcare?
Right now, we only have like 10.
Okay.
Because we're rather, the Bay County Library System started in 1974, so we, so 30 years, so the first people that would be eligible would have been 2004. So we're relatively a newer system when it comes to the pension and the VIBA. So we actually, with the
We were able to get ahead of
Advice of the cross street of the county, we always go in when they do stuff. We got in right at the best time and we were able to start funding it at the early stages, which future-wise, we should be in really good shape for the next, you know, 10, 20, 30 years, so.
And we remain a little above the 100% that the actuary people think we need, which is good. And unlike some other portions of the county which are lower than that, don't have 100% of their prospective expenses in the future fund.
Exactly.
Yeah. Are we in the best shape of others in the county?
No, we are like number three out of eight units. We're like the third best. But we're really good shape. And we are one of the first to close our pension to new hires too. So we have stopped the, you know, endless benefit. So we are definitely leading, I should say, in that area of trying to really make sure that we financially are dealing with our obligations and doing the most prudent thing with our tax dollars. So we are, we are definitely in good shape.
Do we contribute to those new employees' 401Ks?
We do. We put 2% into a new employee's 401K and if they contribute 2%, we will do another match of 2%. So it's an encouragement to get them to save and we, so we give a total of 4% into their pension, or to their 401K, I should say.
Even our new employee this year, Trish Burns, is on the 401K situation instead of a defined benefit.
Yes, I am not in the pension plan. It's nice to know that there's a finite number of people that are going to be in that, so it's easier to plan for.
All right.
Any other questions? Well, I want to thank the committee and Kevin and Trish for coming up with this budget. It's, it's always a endeavor until you find out what the county's gonna tell you with property taxes and where you sit. And once you have that, you can establish that, so thank you. Good job. Anybody have any other questions?
A comment, let me know when you want to do this. In connection with the budget discussion, you will recall that last year, because we did well in the fund budget, particularly in the last couple of months with some payments coming back from a DDA or somewhere and plus the penal fines, we decided to award a statement in lieu of, or a payment in lieu of salary or wages to full-time and part-time employees of 1%, which is paid all at once, which amounts to, if I'm not mistaken, about $30,000, give or take. And this year, we did even better as far as our receipts over expenses and even with the $50,000 new to the digitization project. The committee has come up with a recommended payment in lieu of salary or wages to those same part-time and full-time employees. I guess my question is, do you want me to pick that up now and make that motion over or immediately after we pass the budget? Or do you want me to wait for new business?
I think with new business would be an ideal spot to throw that in.
Okay.
We can do that. If you want to add that to your agendas, we'll talk about the in lieu of payment under the new business. Okay, great. Thank you, Mac. Thank you, Ann. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Trish. All those in favor of receiving the 2016 budget signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Are we adopting it too?
Well, we are. So we just did.
All right.
It is adopted. Personnel committee?
Have not met.
Have not met, okay. Let's go to the unfinished business, which is the memorandum of understanding. Here we would need a motion, and we all have that, it's given to us, under contract extension. There are, I believe, what, three unions here? And it's kind of spelled out and the changes have been, there's some underlined and are crossed out where we are. So if I could receive a motion, either to accept or turn this down so we can go forward one way or the other, then that would be good.
I move that we accept the memorandums of understanding with each of the three unions, which are essentially just a, putting on paper what we had agreed to and passed a couple of months ago. But I move that we formalize that by accepting these three memorandums of understanding.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
There is a second to that motion. In a nutshell, would you just maybe tell us exactly without going into all three, but just what are we doing? So everybody knows.
You'll recall that we had asked administration to make contact with the unions regarding the contracts, the three contracts which expire at the end of this year, in the hopes of getting them resolved early on. They did, they made contact. A month or two, they came back to us announcing that they had got word back from the unions and that both sides were agreed to simply extend the contracts for one year through the end of 2016. And that's what this language does. The additional thing is that by law, from our state legislature, the language of these contracts have to provide about dues not being automatically taken from union employee's paychecks and union employees not having to belong to the union, I think is what it amounts to. So that's what those additional pages are on your, and that is something that both sides agreed to because the state legislature and the governor said you had to. It's a matter of law, so.
So this is a formalization of the agreement that the union has already agreed to and the administration. We as a board, since we are the governing body, we have to approve this for it actually to become effective. And that's what we're asking by that motion. Now, Mac's explained, does anybody have any questions of this, of either Mac, Ann, or the administration? I don't, I think it makes pretty good sense. Anybody else? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the MOA understanding motion as presented by Mac, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it is carried. Done. New business. Seeing that our budgetary items came in and our employees have not had a real raise in a couple of years at least, we'd like to do something instead of that, which is a payment at the end of the year to kind of, in lieu of a raise, if you will. And so I need a formal motion if we're going to do that also. Because again, it's board activated.
I move that we provide to our full-time and part-time employees a payment in lieu of salary or wages in the amount of 1.25% of their wage or salary, which would be paid, I think, early in January of 2016 as a lump sum.
Okay. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion and second, okay. Now we can discuss it. Question to the administration is 1.25, give me the raw dollars of that.
About 30, 35,000.
Okay. This is what we discussed earlier, okay.
You'll recall last year it was a 1% raise. At our meeting, we discussed whether to give it, how much to give it. Different percentages were kicked around. And after I'd say considerable discussion, we decided that we thought the best number would be 1.25%. We do like it because giving a little bit more this way doesn't set a new base for salaries or wages. It depends on the year you had and, of course, contract negotiations also, but we don't have that to worry about this year with the extension. So part thinking, Ann and I, I don't know if Ann wants to say anything, but we kicked it around and pretty much, the two of us with, I think the agreement of Kevin and Trish, thought 1.25% would be fair.
Yeah.
No problem with that at all. It's honorable thing to do. Anybody have any other comments, questions? Let's vote. All those in favor of adopting a motion in the payment in lieu of a contract, new contract extension, we're giving 1.25%. Signify. And that'll be paid before the end of the year?
Right after the beginning of the, I think the first paycheck on the first year in 2016.
So it'll be 1.25 paid after the beginning of 2016. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Open to the public, seeing none, no reason for closed session. Does anybody have any announcements?
Well, of course we have.
Seeing none, we go immediately into post-corner.
If I can bring it up. Ah, rats, it's the wrong one.
Oh, darn.
Okay. Sends us to Christmas and New Year's season. This poem is called "Mistletoe," and it's by Walter de la Mare, D-E-L-A capital M-A-R-E. Sitting under the mistletoe, pale green fairy mistletoe, one last candle burning low. All the sleepy dancers gone, just one candle burning on. Shadows lurking everywhere. Someone came and kissed me there. Card I was, my head would go, nodding under the mistletoe, pale green fairy mistletoe. No footsteps came, no voice, but only just as I sat there, sleepy, lonely, stooped in the still and shadowy air, lips unseen, and kissed me there. So I hope you all get a kiss under the mistletoe sometime during the holidays.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we have, meeting is completed at 6:17. I love everybody. I call the order. The Bay County Library Board Trustee's annual board meeting, December 16, 2015. If we could stand and say the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Eileen, roll call, please.
Don Halli.
Here.
Subhan.
Here.
Ann Harris.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Here. Just a quick comment on what this, why we're having another meeting, if anybody watches this. We had, this is where the board has our annual meeting where we conduct business of the board. We will choose a new chairperson for next year and we will approve our scheduled meetings for the 2016 calendar year, which requires the approval of the board. So that's what this is about. Anybody in the public, seeing none? On the unfinished business, since the last regular board meeting a year ago.
This is out of order, but just, I'd just like to mention, the pledge of allegiance reminded me of this. Anybody who saw last weekend's Army-Navy football game? They had a combined Army-Navy corps that did the national anthem. Very well done.
Did not see it. Thank you. New business. The election of the board of the officers for next year. Is there a motion? And then we'll, once I get a motion, we'll approve.
I don't motion, but I nominate I don't motion, but I nominate Ann Harris to be chairperson, Robert Lachance to be vice-chairperson, and Sue Blondin to be secretary treasurer.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Anybody have any discussions?
I move that the nominations be closed and the three be elected by acclamation.
So moved. We are in, guys. I think, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous vote. You have before you on page number one, the schedule for next year on the board meeting, which also includes this time, where the special board meetings at the local libraries will be, so you can plan ahead for that. So if you, does anybody looking at the schedule there know of any conflicts they have or anybody have anything to say about it? Ann, here you go. Page one, right behind there.
I can foresee myself not being able to have the one on September 28th. That's my birthday.
What kind of excuse is that?
Well, I don't want to go, no.
Well, the ones with the asker's disc are the ones that are going to be held at the different branches of the library. The 28th will be in Pinconning, so if you so choose, we understand. We will excuse you. All right, anybody have any other conflicts? Then is there a motion to approve the library board schedule for 2016?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. We've kind of had the discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it is carried, that is our schedule. Open to the public, seeing none, closed session, no need. Announcements, we've had all of that. Is there a motion to adjourn?
There is one little item of business that our incoming chairperson wants to take up right now.
Oh, yes. Bob, on behalf of the staff, the full board, we have a gift for you. And we want to thank you for the nice, wonderful job you've done and we really appreciate the time you put in. You put a lot of time in preparing for these meetings. They've been great meetings. Real interesting.
I appreciate that. Thank you all. This is, gee, how'd you know? Thank you so much. Ann, what you will do next at the January meeting is you will appoint people to the, so you know and so we can get it on the agenda to the different committees.
Okay.
The chairperson and the member of each one.
All right.
That gift card, Mac's suggestion of a buck apiece, we thought was
Was over the top.
That won't get you quite one drink.
Well, your generosity is so appreciated. Thank you.
Just so the public knows, it's Tri-City Brewing, which we understand our chairperson occasionally
Occasionally.
Stops in it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved, second.
Second.
All those in favor adjourned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, we are adjourned.